All right, we got five o'clock you guys, so we'll go ahead and go ahead and get started. And we're going to our executive session, please. Everybody's doing well? Compliment the chief on his Christmas sweater.
Thank you.
Certainly in the spirit. Yeah.
Who?
Oh, yeah, Rose too. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, she got, yeah, she even got earrings. She kind of have did it on that.
She got socks too.
Where's your earrings at, chief?
I'm sorry, sir. I just can't support those rockers and the man that would be...
Got some more fire engines? All right. Good to see y'all. Okay, in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification. Item two, A, public body being called a meeting close to the public for one or more following reasons, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of the person to a public body, county administrator, attorney, and also clerk, potential performance evaluation. Number, item two, discussion of negotiation incentives, proposed contracts, arrangements, as opposed purchase or sale of property, receipt of legal advice or illegal advice related to impending threat to a potential claim, or other matters covered by attorney-client derivative settlement of legal claims or the position of a public agency and other adversary situations involving assertion against the agency of a claim. Opioid plan MOU with New Life Center, State of Carrera versus Jasper County, tax map numbers ending in zero zero one and zero zero two, agreement and lease with Jasper County Animal Rescue Mission Jarm, Gillisonville Pond property tax map ending in zero four three, development agreement, land lease on lot ending in zero zero one dash G dash one Heather Rouths Wrath Consulting Agreement, proposed lease purchase agreement for fire apparatus, and discussion of matters related to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body with prospect updates, including project showcase, Gopher Hill, Tyco, MCIP, and Pelo. And at this time, we'll call for a motion to go into executive session, please.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Have a second. All in favor, stand up.
All right.
At this time, we call for a motion to come out of the executive session.
So.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the motion carries. At this time, please join in the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Pastor Atkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great heath and justice for all.
I'd like to offer a prayer. Almost what I'm asking, God, we come before you one more time, mama, let's be the house. Didn't have no idea that we was rose one more time, but you saw fit and had compassion on us. And Father God, as we standing before you, we want to also tell you thank you for how you brought us through a blessed Thanksgiving. And we pray for your blessing, Father God, that you will carry through a merry Christmas and a happy new year going into the new year. And Father God, as we go through this meeting tonight, Father God, and what's best for this county, Father God, we ask you to bless each and every one of you, Father God, and thank you for your people coming out, Father God. And then all is said and done, Father God, as we go back to our own, that you have blessed with it. We ask you to give us traveling verse. We ask all the many blessings, your son Jesus, and let everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Atkins. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see you here. Thank you for being with us this evening. It's a pleasure to see everyone here. We got quite a repeat agenda, but we will work through it, so we appreciate your patience tonight as we do that. At this time, I'll call for discussion of our consent agenda, any changes and approval of our agenda, please. Have a motion for approval of our agenda?
So.
Have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the motion carries. First, we have Mr. David Taylor, proclamation of Jasper County supporter of Red Ribbon Week 2023.
I'll please go ahead, if you mind, ma'am. Chair. This was on the agenda back in October, and two people aren't being able to hear me, worrying about issues at the time, but this is a proclamation. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individual status and communities across the nation, where it is the imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate a commitment to drug-free lifestyle, whereas Red Ribbon Week was celebrated in communities across the nation October 23rd to the 31st, whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, military, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, organizations such as the Young Warriors and the Winkor League, and other community-based organizations demonstrate their commitment to foster a healthy drug-free lifestyle, and when the committee of Jasper County further commits to promoting the ongoing success of Red Ribbon Week, therefore be it resolved for Jasper County, Jasper County, South Carolina, thus hereby supporting the plan and observance of October 23rd to October 31st, that Red Ribbon Week urges all citizens to join in this special observance dated this fourth day of December 2023.
Thank you. Corner Raven cannot be with us this evening, so we will move on to item nine. Ms. Rose Dobson Elliott is going to update us on a few of our capital projects. Thank you, Rose.
Chair, council. Yeah, I believe everybody has this at your desk. If you have a question on any particular projects, happy to say that the farmer's market, all keys have been turned over to the chamber. We do have a little couple punch lists, items. One is to put up the bird netting back, and so we're working through that, but other than that, it's good to go. I hopefully have some numbers for you on where we came out. I'm pretty sure we are under budget. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Campbell? Anybody?
Yeah, I mentioned it before, and I've been around, and I know they haven't been down there very long. The bee shed concerned me a lot, that they spent a million dollars down there, and I rode around that thing, rode around it, and I know they did some work, but a million dollars, well, I believe they could have tore it down in Philadelphia with you for that, because I don't see where they done no million dollars worth of that.
You've got to get in there and look at the structural integrity that was replaced.
How much?
The structural integrity of the inside of the facility, the roof, the roof had, the metal had to be redone. It had not been redone or painted or sealed since it had gone up in 2007, where it was. And you have to go in with metal roofs and put those rubber grommets in and seal them every so many years.
That's a big concern, mom, but I can't see where they put that car on, and that bee shed, that could soak the custom.
Yes, once you start looking at it, if you look at all the invoices and everything, sorry, it's there.
Anyway.
Thank you, Rose. Next, one of my favorites, Ms. Lynn Bowles with Keep Jasper Beautiful, report on 2023. And Lynn, I just want to thank you publicly, which I always do. I spoke, I don't know, a few weeks ago in Hardyville, and brought your name up and kind of read off some statistics on what you've been able to accomplish with your group of volunteers and the tons of debris y'all picked up, and what a marvelous job you do. I can tell you that this county is much better off because of you and your efforts and your commitment. I know you were born and raised here and love Jasper as much as everybody sitting on this bench, so we appreciate what you do and glad you're here tonight to give us another day.
I appreciate that, Councilman. I appreciate y'all letting me come before y'all tonight, but it's a team effort, and I want to say thank you to the county council because y'all have already supported this program, and y'all got my report, but it's a little lengthy, so I don't want to go on and on, so I'm just going to go over a couple of things that I feel like that are highlights. This report is only from July 1st to November 30th, and usually I'll report to Keep America Beautiful, and they do all my data compiling for me, so right now I won't have a return on assessment, but I will have that probably in January for just six months, and then, of course, at the end of the year. But as you can see in my report, just with our volunteers since July, we picked up 18 tons of litter, and that's with 1,356 volunteer hours. Now, the value of our volunteers is probably not correct because it's probably low, because when Keep America Beautiful does it, they factor in a lot of other things, but that's what it would cost basically the county if they had the volunteers. We also have a litter crew that Jasper County funds, and they go out once a month and pick up 12 miles. Well, this year's been a little different because they have gone out almost twice a month, because as you can see on my back page, the calls I have had this year from July until November have been astronomical. And we spent two days on plantation drive in Hardyville and picked up over two tons of trash in those two days with the litter crew. But right now, I call this my brown time, because this is when it's winter time and you can really see the trash. But since the program started about two and a half, three years ago, we were at a litter index of about three, five, and four is the worst. And now we did a litter index recently, and we're at a 2.3, which has helped tremendously. We go out, we work with, as you know, the schools, the community, we have 26 adopter highways. I have done real well with the co-appointed community service workers. I've had eight since July, and they do about 60 hours each, so that is phenomenal. I do put them on very safe roads, or either maybe in our parks, or maybe down in Hardyville somewhere that's safe, because I don't like for them to be out on the roads with just them. We've collected $6,800 worth of fines since July, and that is partnering with the Hardyville Police Department, the Jasper County Sheriff's Office, and the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources. I will say this, y'all know that in one year, we collected over 13,000 in fines, and our female South Carolina Department of Natural Resource officer, she was instrumental in those fines. Well, she's left me. Now she's gone to education, so I'm hoping that this year I can get, you know, more law enforcement online, so we can, we can get this taken care of, because she was dynamite. She was really good. And I will say that, you know, I get a lot of questions about law enforcement. Do they help you? Why don't they do this? Why don't they do that? Well, really, you know, I've got a place in my heart for law enforcement, and I know a lot about it, but law enforcement helps me a lot, because Jasper County has, Jasper County Sheriff's Office has cameras out, and they will report to me what they see and what they find, and most of the times, it's, it's, it's dumps. It's not just trash bags around. And y'all can see on your report who all I partner with, my marketing efforts. I will tell you this, I met with Hampton County, Colliton County, and Allendale County last week, and we want to start a radio campaign, and I think the radio station is The Dog, I think it is, out of Hampton, and they've got a great following, but that's something that we would like to do, and also partnering with the Jasper County Arts Council, and we're going to start doing a video, and I'm going to let the kids produce it, and we're going to put it on Facebook, Instagram, anything that we can get out with social media, and I think that when you start with the kids, that helps a lot. But I think our kids don't litter as much as everybody else. Of course, you know, I work with all the law enforcement and all, and also I'm in close contact with Public Works. I work really closely with Dallas Lassiter. She calls me a lot when people call them, and I work with Parks and Recreation. I'm trying to get a group to help pick up some of the landings. I think that would be great. Another thing that I want to bring up is we have had such a population explosion, and a lot of our population that don't speak our language, so I have, I'm getting some cards made for us to put out that's in English and Spanish. And our signs that are out in the county and our cameras, which are basically trail cameras, and I'm sure y'all all know what that is, they seem to steal or demolish our trail cameras, so the Sheriff's Department's helping me with that. They're helping me with some of the better cameras that we've got. So I do want to tell you that in November, my complaints have been high, and it's because of the brown season. So we're trying to do the best we can, and when we find something and y'all call me, or not y'all, but hypothetically, anyone calls me, either I will go see, and I can tell you, and I think Chairman Salz will tell you, that when I'm like a dog with a bone, I mean, I'll get, I'll get them. And what was it, two weekends ago, I got someone, and we charged him $1,000, and they had dumped on Knolls Island Road, and it was bad, but we got it done, got it cleaned up and all, so. Any questions? I know I ramble on and on, but y'all got this report, and I just wanted y'all to know that we're really out there trying. It's, it's a struggle. It's a struggle, and I think that since I've had this job, every little piece of chewing gum on the road, I see it. But, you know, I do, I can't stand it. I was just telling them over with Jasper County Fire and Rescue, I said, it's driving me nuts, is all I think about when I'm driving around the county. I'm like, oh, my Lord. But anyway, I certainly appreciate the litter crew that we have. They're doing a great job, and like I said, we've used them a lot in the last six months, and they're going to continue. And also, I spoke with Ms. Burgess last week. I found out maybe some... I found out maybe some avenues that we can look at for next year, that the county can look at for funding that I think will be really good for the county. And, um, whatever I can help with, I will.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much for what you do.
Councilman Kemp, you got to talk loud because you know I can't hear.
Pull that microphone there, maybe. Sorry, well, just a little bit more. Anyway, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
You had to say that we went down from, uh, from three point something to two point something. Is it because we're picking up more trash or there's less trash out there?
No, it's because we're picking up trash. I can assure you it's not, it's not less.
I just wanted to bring that out.
Yeah, thank you. It's not, in fact, it's gotten a little worse, but we're on top of it. And I think that, you know, we're making headway. It's not going to be perfect. And when you see a road that's got litter, it's bad, but it's not as bad as it used to be. I mean, it used to just be everywhere and it still is in some parts. I got a call from Freedom Parkway. I got to go down there. It's bad. Now that one's bad. So, you know, but I'm going to go down there and we're going to look at it. I got a group that wants to pick up, so that'll be good.
And, um, what's the lady's name who was over at Palmetto?
Sarah Lyles.
Sarah Lyles. Uh, she spoke and gave us an update at the legislative conference in Greenville, South Carolina last week. And she praised you highly for the work that you've been doing down here in Jasper County.
I'm glad. Did she have her be the law enforcement, our law enforcement with her?
No, it was just her.
Just her?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for saying that, yeah. I worked so closely with them, but they're very supportive. She wanted to come tonight, but she had another meeting she had to go to. So she said she wanted to come and see y'all. So maybe when we report at the end of the year, she can come, but thank you. But, um, anyone in the county and anyone on the council, of course, y'all should have a cell phone. Don't call me at the office because I'm usually not there. And I'm going to be there next week because I've got to do a year end for Palmetto Pride and Keep America Beautiful. But, um, y'all just call me. And if I can't do it, I'll call the county. And another thing is SC DOT got a tremendous amount of money for their litter crew. And in fact, today I talked to them and we are joining. I want to tell y'all this because this is important. I've gotten six calls in the last two weeks about Argent Boulevard. I can't put volunteers out there. Mr. Kemp, you'll remember that, um, Sun City North had a group and they, they went out and picked up and they finally just said, it's too dangerous for us. But Argent Boulevard's on our list, Wagon Branch, a section of Grace Wall, Peerysburg, and Jenkins and Coleman. But Hardyville Police is going to help me with Jenkins and Coleman, so.
Good job. We appreciate all you do, Lynn.
Well, thank y'all so much and I appreciate y'all.
Yeah. We do, we do appreciate what you do. And I hope this company, the county council, could give you the financial needs that you need to have, continue on. Because I want to see a clean county. And I want to remind everybody sitting here, this young lady is working part-time at this job. This is a part-time job that she's doing, but she's doing it on a full-time basis. And she is really working hard to feed this county up. And we need to give her all the support we can. And I want the county council, let's get together and help over the financial needs to get this county clean and help her out. I applaud that.
Well, thank you. And I think next year we might be on the right road, right, Kemp? We'll do that. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'd also like to take a second and recognize one of our council members. And, uh, I really wasn't aware of this. Um, but I feel much safer sitting up here while he's beside me. But, um, Councilman Alvin Atkins, um, was recently inducted into the Kung Fu Hall of Fame. And he's been at this for over forty years. And, um, it's, it's really impressive. And, uh, USA Martial Arts Hall of Fame, Alvin Atkins has been officially inducted into their Hall of Fame Kung Fu Master of the Year November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three in Orlando, Florida. Congratulations, Pat Atkins. That's quite an accomplishment. And, um, are we going to hang this in council chambers? But that's really impressive. And to be, you know, doing this, uh, for forty-one years, that's, that's kind of cool. So, um, I, uh, I just want to say congratulations and say, you know, that's a big deal, so. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll move right on into resolutions. Um, Mr. Andrew Fulgham, consideration of resolution R two zero two three dash two four, adopting Jasper County opioid funds management plan and authorizing the execution of the MOU with New Life Center.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, the resolution before you, resolution twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, is a culmination of about a year's worth of work of a lot of other people, not just my work. Heather Rath from Heather Rath Consulting, Nicole Smith from New Life Center, and a long list of stakeholders involved in emergency services and law enforcement throughout the county, to include municipalities, and our corner. Working with that group, uh, we have come up with this document for your consideration. And that is a resolution that does a number of things. It adopts a Phase One Jasper County Opioid Management Use Plan. Uh, and the reason for that is because Jasper County, of course, has received funds, opioid settlement funds through participation in litigation regarding opioid overprescription and marketing, among other things, commonly known as opioid litigation. We have a running tally of the funds that are received. And this process of establishing a plan will allow us to access those funds to help educate about recovery in the community. So the resolution adopts the plan. Uh, it also authorizes the county administrator to enter into an official memorandum of understanding with New Life Center. And that MOU is included with this resolution as well as a budget for doing that at sixty thousand dollars per annum. Sixty-two thousand dollars, correction. And so we think this is the right way to get the process started and to have a plan in file with you to start the process. The first phase of the plan would be implemented with this particular MOU. And then, of course, we would come back to you to implement what is the second phase of the Phase One Plan, which is the community education component. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, but respectfully requesting your consideration of adopting a resolution.
Mr. Kemp, are there any questions? Pat Atkins? Ms. Clark?
Yeah.
Mr. Gorme? This time we'll call for a motion for approval of MOU.
Make a motion that the MOU will be approved presented by the administration?
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulgham. Mr. David Teller, consideration of resolution R dash two zero two three dash two five, including purchase of one twelve, Weathersby and matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Before you, that is a resolution that had an attached option agreement relating to a property up the street here on Third Avenue, a potential satellite office, something commonly referred to as the dialysis clinic property of Weathersby Street. We've had the property appraised. The administration has been in touch with the current owners. We negotiated a price and placed it into an option contract that would allow us ninety days to continue our due diligence on the property. And then exercise our option. If it suits us and purchase the property, the total price of eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The resolution, you had the option, which has the different terms on that. We're not bound on anything. We're putting down some earnest money that we can get back if we find that we don't want to buy the property before the seventy-five, or before the exercise of the option is due. And it allows, uh, an associated law firm of mine, Harvey Abadi, to do the due diligence on legal work, title search, those types of matters.
Mr. Kemp, any questions or comments?
No.
Pat Atkins? Mr. Gorme? Mr. Teller, just for the, um, for the public, can you give everyone what the use would be for the public's of the county purchasing this property?
Um, the county has been for a while, continuing to look at the area of our admin building for potential spaces to have satellite offices. Uh, there are several, Mr. Lucas has looked at several uses out there. Has sometimes thought about perhaps a temporary location for the Pratt Memorial Library where we do the construction there, or bringing in one of our other offices that could be moved into that area closer to the building, but a further satellite office, or breaking down the, the people in here so that we're not too far away, two blocks away, um, in a relatively new building.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
So, second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion case. Mr. Teller, consideration of resolution R dash two zero two three dash two six, committing to negotiated fee in lieu of ad lorem tax agreement between Jasper County and Project Showcase, identifying the project and all the matters related thereto.
Yes, sir. Um, in economic development projects, we often start out, mostly we start out with an inducement resolution that qualifies expenditures made by the, uh, developer that's coming in to pose the economic help, be able to include those costs and expenses in the total package when they do the incentives. This is the preliminary step. Oddly enough, next up on our agenda, item we need to get into the action items is the consideration of a multi-county business park, FLO agreement, and special source revenue credit deal on this particular project. This project is located in Hardyville Commerce Park down there. Proposes approximately fourteen million dollars in investment and approximately one hundred and forty new full-time employment jobs.
Good stuff. Any questions?
I guess, uh, Mr. Kemp, is that, is that another tax that's going to be added on to the people?
No, sir. They will pay taxes that are at a set rate, um, that provides an economic incentive to take it down to six percent, um, tax rate instead of the old Ryan. Uh, my, it used to be ten and a half percent with Brandon and Six, and the state changed the rules around. But there's still incentives to have it in a multi-county park with a FLO agreement. Uh, they get a break on their taxes provided they meet the investment requirements and, uh, in the time that they have under the statute to do that.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval.
So, second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion case. Mr. Teller, you be, um, filling in for Ryan?
Uh, seem to be doing that a lot, I think. Yes, sir. Uh, the next thing is the actual formal first reading of the documents that we use to implement a multi-county park, providing the certain infrastructure credits. The terms are the same in the inducement regulation, fourteen million dollars, one hundred and forty jobs. Uh, we create a park with Hampton County, fairly standard stock documents that we've seen before. Nothing, uh, out of the ordinary that you wouldn't have seen before on one of our other business parks.
Any questions or comments? Here, no one? Call for a motion for approval.
So, this will be the first reading of the ordinance?
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion case. Next, Ms. Burgess, we have a public hearing and consideration of second reading of ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash one nine, amending the business license ordinance of Jasper County to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty. Ms. Burgess, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Um, this is the second reading of the business license ordinance. We are required to approve this ordinance by the December thirty-first of every odd year. And, uh, part of that is that we have to adopt the latest standardized business license class schedule as recommended by the Municipal Association of South Carolina and adopted by the Director of the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. And this is the ordinance that provides that vehicle.
Any questions?
Mr. Kemp? Yes, I'd just like to comment on this. I said last time, I'll say this time. Next year, I'd like to see something in there incentive for small business, small startup businesses in business license.
In the, in the standardized?
Standard, well, it's when you have a bill or permit, it's reduced for new business.
Oh, okay.
Or some incentive.
This is a standardized, this is standardized throughout the state. So we have to, I have to know more about what you're looking for.
Well, I'm just looking for incentives.
Might be the better place to put that, so.
Pat Atkins, any questions? Ms. Clark? Mr. Gorme? This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
So, move. Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We do have a public hearing, so I'll open the, uh, open the floor up for public hearing. Anybody wishing to, uh, speak, uh, as it relates to this specific item, uh, please do so at this time. Public hearing going once. Public hearing going twice. We now close the public hearing. Item sixteen, uh, Mr. David Teller, public hearing and consideration of second reading of ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash two zero, authorizing and approving a loan from South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank, an intergovernmental agreement on Jasper County, South Carolina, the city of Hardyville, and the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank and other matters related thereto. Uh, and this is exit three financing.
Yes, sir. If I might, it's probably going to be overdone, but since it's a public hearing. A long time ago, we went down the path with our jurisdiction, our Hardin, sister jurisdiction, Hardyville, to create the exit three down there and come up with financing operations over a number of years. Uh, we've been involved with negotiations with them, with the STIB board, to come up with financing alternatives to build this interchange for economic growth down there. Ultimately, what we have is an agreement that has been before council before, so we've had discussions and workshops on this, where, uh, we have committed to provide, accept a grant, uh, from STIB, borrow money from the STIB, and pledge approximately thirteen million dollars in raw, uh, raw numbers as our transportation sales tax in fairness of the project. The last thing that the council did was limited the amount of the loan that we would support coming from the STIB to this project at eighteen million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. These documents approve that agreement. They approve an intergovernmental agreement, um, with the STIB board, the STIB financing provisions, multiple contract matters. It's a lot of paper to get to the point. It's just, I just distilled down to you. We're pledging money. We're creating a TIP district to capture tax increment financing as a backstop for the, as a payment methodology. The loan is a backstop for that. Our transportation sales tax funds that. The developers putting money in, the city of Hardyville is putting money in. School board is supporting this as well with the pleasure of their TIP revenue. So it is the deal that we worked out several months ago when we had a workshop here in these council chambers with all the parties involved. This is the paperwork that memorializes that. I'll try and answer any questions, although it's very, quite technical and I have to refresh my memory from time to time with dollar specifics.
I see something we've been working on for years.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, uh, discussion from council before we do a public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Teller. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on this specific item, please do so at this time. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. We now close the public hearing and call for a motion for approval, please.
So, move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Teller. Okay, next we have, uh, Mr. Teller again, public hearing and consideration of the second reading of ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash two one, amending section nine dash six, nine dash nine six, as adopted by ordinance number two zero two two dash three nine to the appointment of members to the Levy Fire Protection Board.
Uh, this involves the Levy, uh, Fire District and voluntary fire department. In Levy, uh, back this past spring, we concluded after over a year of negotiation, the absorption of of the Levy Fire Department into Jasper County's fire protection districts as part of our agreements that we had. The initial board for the new Levy Fire Department is going to include three members, two of which were to come from the, be former board members. When we got down to it, because of extraneous matters, could not get commitments from the Levy Fire Department board members to serve. Mr. Kemp has been in touch with them, they have acknowledged through heaven, will be getting a letter mentioning this, that they're okay with the, us not having the two of the three be former Levy voluntary fire department members. So this would change the ordinance that we passed adopting that, that allows that these new members just have to come from the Levy Fire District. That's some and some of it.
This time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on this specific matter, please do so at this time. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, we call for a motion for approval.
So move, but this is the third, the second reading of this ordinance.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And next, Mr. David Tetter, we have a public hearing only for the Tyco MCIP and FLO agreement.
Yes, sir. Approximately a year ago, we had second reading after we sold the property to Tyco Gopher Hill out of Cypress Industrial Park to create a new park and provide sources, incentive credits to them. After we got to second reading, the owners came upon a potential expansion of the project by buying new equipment, upgrading the existing facility, which kind of put everything on halt while they worked a deal through the auspices of the Southern Carolina Alliance with the Department of Commerce to expand the amount of infrastructure that's going to be placed out there. So now we have, coming before you at our next meeting, the third reading of the ordinance, but we wanted to have a public, an additional public hearing and bring forward the new documents, which generally don't change the incentive, they add in two property owners associated with Tyco and Gopher Hill Holdings. So we wanted you to have that opportunity to refresh your memory. Before we go back, come back to you again in January for the final reading on this. Hampton County also has to have its reading on it, too, with the changes adding in those parties. Basically, just so you know, the contract minimum is a twenty, a nine million dollar minimum investment over five years. It fixes the rate of millage for that, and they get a twenty percent SSRC, special source revenue credit. I'm trying to answer any questions that you have, if you have any. But no action from the council other than going to a public hearing.
Any questions, Mr. Kemp?
Yes, I do. Why didn't we have a set the reading this time? Why didn't we just have a public hearing?
Because of the length of time that had passed by, we thought it was hard recruiting to do it that way.
Pass that, Mr. Kemp. Do I have any questions? This time, we'll open the floor to the public. Anybody wishing to address council on a specific item, please do so at this time. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. Next, we have citizen comments, open floor, we have a sign-in sheet here. And just to remind everyone, we have a three-minute limit per person. And first, we have Alex Gilfer.
Yes, sir.
Alex?
Yes, sir.
Would you just come to the mic, state your name, and you've got three minutes.
Hello, hello, council, thanks for having me. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Caesar Red heirs in regards to a property down on Gilmania. I have a parcel number, I'd like to state for the record, zero eight eight dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero zero four. In the past, we had a, it's family heirs property, in the past, we've had a road that accessed that, that property that crossed over CSX Road. There was a unfortunate car accident on May fourteenth, twenty, two thousand and two, where that road was then removed. Because of that road, we have not been able to access that property for enhancement for our unhoused family members, and we would like to submit application with CSX. I believe Councilman Atkins at some point met with one of the members on that property to walk in and look at it, and we are asking the council to, one, as we submit application with CSX, if we could ask council to assist us with the contracting aspect of that, since it was once existing. That would be part one of our ask for the council, as well as a letter of recommendation for that road to be approved with CSX, once that application is made. We have been working with Newton Wall Firm to kind of move forward with that project, but we are asking the council, because it was once an existing road, if we can get some assistance with getting that cross over that portion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we have Eric Munger, and I think, is that the same topic?
The same, man.
Eric Munger, okay. Did you want to speak, or I think he was pretty?
Everything.
He did a good job.
He did a good job, thank you.
We'll be happy to help. Pat Athens, I think, is taking the lead on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Shaw Rees?
Well, I'm, I'm a family member, and I just wanted to come and support. He did amazing, so there's nothing much for me to say, but I just want to point out that this is just partial of our family and we're going to support the movement of the road.
Yes, ma'am.
That's how important it is to us.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Kenneth Glasson. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
How are you? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Ken Glasson, I'm a retired Marine Lieutenant Colonel, and I own a company called Semper Agis Mercatus, which is a credit card processing company. And I've been asked to come and say a few words about my interaction as the new credit card processor for the county. Mr. Skinner and I met through when he was campaigning. Leon Smith, who's a local restaurant owner, made the introduction, and then about a year later, he actually got elected, and I went into his office under the recommendation of a client to discuss what he's doing on his credit card processing and see if we could make some improvements with the county. As I mentioned, my background, I've owned my business for about twelve years. We are trying to give credibility to an industry that doesn't have any, so the amount of time that we go and we really take and roll up our sleeves. When I reviewed what Mr. Skinner gave me, they were using a company called Sturgis and PayPal, which actually don't process credit cards, they're a third party. It'd be like going to a local Ford car dealership to get a car instead of going to the manufacturer. Obviously, the manufacturer direct would be cheaper. In the credit card world, I am the manufacturer, I'm a first editor corporate rep, so we eliminate that middleman. But in evaluating their current rate, was that two point nine percent? They had a boatload of monthly fees that, and they were what's called not PCI compliant. In other words, the system wasn't evaluated to be secure. They had annual processing fees in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, anywhere between seven and nine thousand dollars per month, and cost of equipment was four thousand dollars per unit. And the system, again, although a good system, it was a little bit outdated. Upon the evaluation, we eliminated all the credit card fees, we provided all the training, which they were paying for before, up to seven thousand dollars, we provide that for free. We are twenty-four seven support, we provided all the equipment that the county now uses and at no cost. We put that in place and we continue for the life of the agreement, as long as the county will have us, we'll continue that. And we also have the, with the training, the exchange of equipment, with the added training and any other information that the county requires, there's no cost, we absorb all that. I know we put an integrated system in place, which my business partner can attest to, and how that interfaces to make it more efficient, just bring it up to speed. I'm happy to sit down, I know it's trying to jam a lot to a three-minute conversation, but in the end of the day, the county's literally paying nothing for all the processing that we're doing, we cover all the differences. And I think, having worked in the government for thirty years, I can imagine sitting where you are and how difficult it is. I don't know the previous tenant that Mike replaced, but what I do know is you're only as good as what you're told. So there's not throwing Sturgis or anyone under the bus, is that they're told certain things from their perspective, and that's all they can do because they're at that point, and we just bring it to a different level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glasson, and really, the appropriate forum would be to get you on the agenda instead of coming to public and only having two minutes.
We'd love it.
But that's absolutely, that's beneficial for everybody. Matthew Thompson, your partner?
Yes. As Ken mentioned, we came in here as a, as a recommendation, we went and evaluated what's already in the system. From an online standpoint, you know, the mobile experience, I don't know if you guys had experienced it as taxpayers, it was pretty abysmal, and you couldn't even really navigate it on mobile device. We've rectified that, made it so that way it's very easy to pay. You can enter an email address and get a receipt kicked back to you once the payment has processed. Future iterations will have the ability for taxpayers to have accounts that they can sign up for, and then get a notification whenever they have a new tax bill. Or, again, they can get text messages, emails, whenever they're fifteen days due. So these are things that make your guys' life a little bit easier when it comes to collecting taxes, actually the treasurer's life a little bit easier. But then also for treasurer employees, they can now access this data. Again, we looked at a system that was, looked like it had been built in the nineteen nineties, and I think it kind of was, and it hasn't been updated since that. We're trying to help alleviate the ability to not have to go to a physical desktop in order to sign in and access data. So we're now able to use this antiquated system's data, pull it out, and make it in a way where they can interact with their taxpayers a little bit more efficiently. As Ken mentioned, we saved over about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We had about a fifty thousand dollar fee from the previous employer, or from the previous company, that they were charging annually, again, for a website that just didn't really function all that well. And then ninety-eight thousand dollars in PayPal fees alone that we have eliminated by moving towards the system. So, again, we just wanted to come in here and just tell you the things that we're trying to help you guys out with. And, yeah, again, just trying to not be partisan or anything, just come in here and just give you guys a great service, give the taxpayers of this county a great service, and it's something that'll make their lives a lot easier, that's our goal, so, thank you.
Next, we have Mike Skinner, our treasurer.
Counsel, chairman. Ever since I took office on July third, I have stood in front of this county council on several occasions to identify issues, provide updates and corrections, and ask for help when needed. I actually hate that I have to come before, in front of you guys and ask for more money. I hate it. I shouldn't have, to honestly. However, an annual budget is seventy-five thousand dollars less than your own county council budget, I simply do not have the resources needed to operate efficiently. This is especially true when forced to restart such an important office that is vital to the daily interactions of our taxpayers. What's more egregious to me than the budget is the fact that I keep coming before you only to be lectured on anything from school funding, conservatism, and communication of all things. All of it is unnecessary and an unpleasant exchange. There is an agreement in the state between the DMV and all county treasurer's offices who issue motor vehicle registrations and decals. A portion of that taxpayer money is collected and set aside in a fund for the treasurer's office to use to specifically help facilitate the issuance of those decals. On June thirtieth, over ninety thousand dollars of taxpayer money was transferred out of the decal fund, deposited into the county's general ledger as miscellaneous funds, and then the account was then closed. I have asked on several cases that the money be given back or set aside, so that the money is spent as intended when collected from our residents. I've been told that money is no longer the treasurer's, and they are right, it is not the treasurer's money, it is not Mike Skinner's money, it is the treasurer's office's money. I encourage the chairman and his council to urge the administrators to reallocate this tax money for its proper uses, and I will no longer have to come before you and ask for funding. This would have been more than enough to solve my internal control audits, buy the needed computers I need, and help fund our upgrades. As far as the addendum to help us get within state regulations and solve a complex issue regarding checks, return for insufficient funds, I will no longer wait on the county. The Attorney General's office has assured me that SLED will be able to pick up the, where Malden and Jenkins has left off, and investigate this for us. I am praying for a quick and easy fix. Not knowing how to correct this going forward is not an option for me, it will be fixed. This will cost the county nothing, and well within our budget. In conclusion, ignorance does not install, instill trust. Guessing people who see something wrong and bring it up does not build trust. If we want our taxpayers to trust in my system, I need to be upfront, honest, eat a little humble pie now and again, which I have, and bust my team's butts to make sure that this is an office we can all take pride in. Jasper County will have the best tax office in the state, and I would like to thank those that have helped us with this. You know who you are, thank you. Going forward, I will no longer stand up here with a target on my back and beg for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Actually, I'm Jim Groomes. Welcome, Mr. Groomes.
Good evening, chairman. Chairman Salz, ladies and gentlemen of the council, county administrator, Mr. Fulgham, county attorney, Mr. Tetter, my name's Jim Groomes, I'm the president of Tyco Manufacturing. Just a short, little drive up here to Cypress Ridge. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and speak on behalf of Tyco, thank you for all the support throughout all the years. Secondly, our roots are growing deep in Jasper to much of your help, and just want to say thank you for that. I'd like to specifically invite you to Tyco Manufacturing for a tour of the facility. We have a lot of good things going on there. We are producing one of the leading industry terminal tractor electric vehicle, fully electric. It's happening right, right here down the road in Jasper County. Over the last year and a half, we have added more than two hundred jobs, up to as high of three hundred and forty full-time employees, and that number varies as we increase and decrease production as demand requires. As mentioned earlier, we are investing in one ninety-three Cypress Ridge, that property has been purchased, we're looking forward to making that a customer experience center, where our parts distribution center, our uptime center, and our engagement with our key fleet partners like UPS, Pepsi, Frito-Lay, and other large fleets that are buying our terminal tractors come in to do a pilot of their vehicle. Our efforts over the last eighteen months at Tyco, since June of twenty twenty-two, has resulted in us being awarded the South Carolina Manufacturers Transformation and Operational Excellence Company this year, so I had the chance earlier to take some of my staff up to Greenville for the award, not just those that are in management positions, but also all the way down to the floor level, it was a wonderful experience, everybody seemed to enjoy it greatly. Things are coming together for Tyco here in Jasper County in a way that positively impacts the city of Ridgeland, Jasper County, and surrounding counties. Being raised in Beaufort myself, son of a Marine, former Marine, it just gives me great pride to be able to come back home and be a part of this great company and doing what we're doing. Again, I'd like to personally invite you, reach out to the, I'll reach out to the office and make sure that we have a day or a time that suits your schedule, I'd love for you to get a chance to come down and see what we're doing down the road at Tyco Manufacturing. Thank you very much, and look forward to working with you and continuing to be a good corporate citizen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groomes. We appreciate the relationship we have with Tyco and what you guys are doing, capital investment, job creation, and giving back to our community, and all the, all the luck and success in the future with y'all's business plan has certainly been very successful in whatever we can do to, to help and participate and support. Please let us know because we're behind you guys a hundred percent.
Thank you, chairman.
Next, we have Ms. Verna Garvin. Ms. Garvin.
Good afternoon, chairman, my name is Verna Garvin, and I hope this is my last time, I come in to do a three-minute. I sat back and I watched your September nineteenth council meeting, and ninety-eight percent of what Skinner told you guys was a lie. Now, I, if I have to take legal action, I'll do what I have to do, because I am Now, I, if I have to take legal action, I'll do what I have to do, because I am not going to go through life with somebody scandalizing my name. I've been in office for 24 years. Now, if you want to come in the office and make changes, then come in, make changes. When I took office, 2003, well, 1995, 2003, if I had to make changes, I did what I had to do. Now, he stated that the files was, there was no files. When, I know how important files are to the county. Bank statements from 2019 to 2023 was left in the office. You had your school county files, school files, Hartville, and the rest of the entities from 2021, from July 2021 till June 2023, I left in the office. Now, if he came in there and discarded, threw them all away, that is not my fault. DMV decals that we never used, they were in the safe. So if DMV didn't, because we didn't have to turn those back in. Again, if they were not there when they asked for, then all fault is on him. Now, he talked about fees, $90,000 for the fees for online. Online and credit card, there was nothing to the county. Those two-point, whatever, to 2.9 or whatever was charged was on the customer. County had gotten no bill for online fees or credit card. Banks, talk about shredded checks. Yes, Ms. Garvin shredded checks. These are the checks that we take in there, because I remote check from the office daily. But I kept them in the safe just in case I had to go back to look for something. Yes, I shredded them all because they all needed to be shredded, and they were shredded. Your receipts that we keep a copy of, yes, I put all those receipts in the, I think it's the Clemson building, all those were there, plus the all the old files that were in the office. Now, my thing is this, if he put more time and effort on his job and what needs to be done, and start worrying about what I did and what I didn't do, because you coming in new, you don't know what the job entailed. He talked about policies and procedures. If you have any kind of backlog in financials as far as accounting, you come in, you kind of set your own pace, or set it to where it's convenient for you and your staff. I had financial background, so quite naturally, I, the girls know what to do because this is what I tell them to do. I didn't have to set them right, no policy and procedure, you know, A, B, C. So if he expected to come in the office and think something was written down word for word, no, that was not there. My last thing, and I'm going to sit down, I hope this is the last time that I have to come up here. Broken furniture, there was no broken furniture left in the office. So all I'm saying to you guys, I've been in office 24 years, there was no problem. We have, we have an internal auditor that does our books quarterly or whatever, no problem. So I don't know what his problem is, but I am tired of it. The charge play. If he's going to do the job, come in the office and do the job, and stop making faulty claims. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garvin. Okay. That is the end of our session. Looking for comments. At this time, we'll move to the administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a few items on my report, but the main one I wanted to just clarify for you and with the public is in your meeting schedule. As we have discussed, a need for a business matter requires that we have another county council meeting prior to the end of the calendar year, and you all have determined that to be Monday, December 18th, at 9:00 a.m. And it'll be a virtual meeting. We'll clean up some of the items that we have to get through, most notably the business license ordinance. We'll have a couple other small business items that we tack onto that meeting. We thank you for being able to schedule that meeting. And then Ms. Simmons will be up before you. I said Simmons, is it Ms. Simmons? Okay, all right. She'll be up before you about a meeting schedule, and on that meeting schedule proposes your first meeting to be on, in 2024, to be on January 16th, Tuesday, January 16th. And so we want to try to make sure that that gets established today so that everyone understands when you're going to meet your first meeting in 2024. Other than that, I didn't have anything else to report out on, unless, of course, you have any questions about my administrative report or progress report.
Any questions?
In your report, you had talked about that you wanted to get some direction on a workshop in the new year.
Yes, I would like that. I would like to see, we have a workshop item on a development agreement issue that we spoke of earlier in executive session with you, among other things, whether or not you wanted to have a workshop slash retreat earlier on this year. Very much, we appreciate some council direction on that.
And we'll probably look at that after the first of the year, and we'll look at our calendar and see what we have on our plate, and then we'll set some dates after we get through holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fulgham.
Welcome.
At this time, I'll call for a motion for approval on our consistent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried. Councilman comments. We'll start with Ms. Claude.
I'm glad to be back and see all the smiling faces after all the food that we consumed during the Thanksgiving holiday. As you know, November and December are busy times for the council. I attended several conferences. Matter of fact, I just got back, but we went from Greenville, South Carolina, the legislative conference, and we talked about a lot of things, things that we want to see changes made. And it's good for all council members to attend because the same thing we be saying here, they are saying it there, but then the senators and the representatives are there that you can approach and let them know how you feel about certain things and what you would like to see changed. So it was good. I was there for three days, and it was cold. And before that, I was at the EOC, our regional convention. There, we're talking about our children under privilege, children who needs help, parents that needs help. These are all the things that we are dealing with. And the meeting before that, I was at another meeting, oh, in our mid-year conference in Columbia, where we meet and greet our senators and representatives and our other people who are holding position also. We just have to get up, get out, and speak out. People don't know what we need here in Jasper County if we don't take it to them. They're not going to come and ask us. We have to go and give it to them. So I've been very busy and got a few more things that I got to do before the year go out, and I'll get up and start again in 2024 if it's the Lord's will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Garvey, any comments?
I'd just like to tell everybody, I hope you had a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have a real Merry Christmas, and be careful over the holidays. A lot of things happened over the holidays. Everybody trying to go home to see family and one thing and another, and it's a busy time of the year.
Councilman Kell?
Yes, I attended the Hilton Head Chamber of Commerce State of the Region. Very interesting. We were well-ordered by Mayor Partville. I attended the SOLOCO meeting, and very important about this, we have coming up, we're allowed to use a tax money for 50% for affordable housing, but I didn't know this, and I was just brought out that we have to do a study to use that. And I think we talked to Beaufort or Fort Royal. I think they're doing the study, and they can tell us what to do on that. I can know affordable housing is number one on this list. You have transportation, you have anything, it's affordable housing. If you don't have people here, you can't get anything done. I went to a minority ecosystem meeting in Beaufort, and we're talking about small business and staking up. That's why I was asking about the business charges. I met with Paul Vincent, Chief of Engineering for BGA WSA, and got a whole rundown of what they're doing. I think we're going to have a great engineer there. He has a background in development, so he knows what we need, and if we want good development, we need good work. I attended affordable housing support. Everybody should, they should do that. I suggest they should do it again, and more people should show up, because there was a lot of information there about land, giving land to a developer and setting up some affordable housing, like remit churches and nonprofits, something that I never thought about before. And I took a boat tour of the Broad River in February, and attended the Bay City Airport Commission on November 15th. And I just want to remind everyone that I had three ordinances that I'd asked to be put for the council, and two of them were really just nothing more than just getting rid of something that we don't use anyway. And the other one was a table, was for the assessor, we got to do that. And I worked, last meeting, we were on the noise ordinance. I went to the sheriff's department, we sat down, we talked. I had an ordinance that I'll be giving to the attorney, because he had some questions on law, and I will bring it back for the council next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
I just want to say this in my few minutes, this year was an honor, for me being here at Jasper County, around the reason we're at here, and I'm about youth, you know, and this right here is going to touch a lot, to be put in the hall of fame from little Jasper County. Y'all don't know how I felt when I was in Orlando, Florida, and got inducted. You know, and it said, "Inductee Alvin Atkins, category Kung Fu Master of the Year." I might be in there saving it, but I'm good. I'm not messing with you. Country, United States of America, should let it be known who ceded this present. The knee of individual in the document has proven honor and recognized by other instructors master and grandmaster. USA Marshal of Honor of Fame, I'm a seven-degree grandmaster. A baby son in Germany, he's a second degree. My daughter, she's a second degree. My wife, a first degree. My other son, a second degree. My whole house is nothing but Kung Fu fighters. I started back there in prison on Nick Cannon, Genie, and Ben Cannon, back there with O'Reilly's there. And then I left and I moved on, and I went to Hilton Head, started taking up Hong Kong Kung Fu style. But I'm about the youth. When I came on county, Ministry of Trade, my first priority was about the youth, getting their stuff done for them, being a leader, putting stuff, because we losing our young people, you know, and trying to get them involved in something, you know, and this, I loved it. This is my passion. I'm a pastor also, going on 26 years, but this is my passion. You know, I believe in grooming young people, you know, and you never get too old, you know. Just like I say, I still be 70 years old, and I feel this. And y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Pastor Atkins, I do want to thank our staff for the beautiful decor, Christmas tree, and our wreaths and lights all around the building, our Christmas trees, so pretty. Y'all did a great job, so I want to just wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Remember the reason for the season, Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and let's be mindful of that, be careful, be giving and compassionate to others, and let's have a good month and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. So with that being said, I'll call for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All in favor, stand up. Y'all have a good night.